Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to come and talk to you today. I feel quite humbled and honoured to be here. But also, it seems that the script has fitted in because actually what Ben's been just talking about, some of that, I can bring my insight and experience from Scarborough. But I do think actually, looking down the list of who's here today, is it not dangerous stroke illegal for such talent and expertise and awesomeness to be in the same room at the same time? A bit like when the Royal Family weren't allowed to go on the same aircraft. What happens if it goes wrong? So I want to talk to you about our experience and a little story from Scarborough. And yes, I am the former head of communications and marketing. And there's a good reason for that. Simply because the organisation was abolished at the end of March this year. Not because I repeatedly sent out news releases with the word 'public' misspelt. Or at least, I hope not. If you follow local government in North Yorkshire where we are, the seven boroughs and district councils were abolished at the end of March because of going through the unitarisation programme. The county council took over services. It transferred into a single unitary authority. That's why we lost and my post became redundant. That's the only reason, at least that's the excuse I'm sticking to today. So that's the most important thing. So a little bit about Scarborough. It's probably a place you've heard of. Here's a little video to show you some of the places. We're about 60 miles in that direction on the coast. Three main seaside towns, as you can see. We've also got some beautiful coastal villages. And a massive chunk of the borough of Scarborough is actually inside the North York Moors National Park, which has a huge impact on things like planning. And there is an unwritten rule, by the way, that says in your adult life, and Ben, I'm pleased to say you're now in the adult category, you must come to Scarborough or one of those places at some point. I'm good with faces, so I expect to see you there eating fish and chips when I'm there next time. But by way of an introduction to the borough itself, because although you may think it is a picturesque place and very beautiful to go to, and I think Phil might even be a convert on coming to Scarborough in his new caravan. Three figures that really, I think, are important that sort of sets the tone a little bit. The first is 108,000. That's the population in the borough of Scarborough. It's the second biggest place in terms of population in the whole of North Yorkshire after Harrogate. And the Harrogate district is very, very posh compared to Scarborough. But it's quite popular. Phil, when you come in your caravan, you will be one, hopefully, of about 8.8 million people who came to the borough of Scarborough as a day visitor and another million or so overnight visitors in 2019. That's second only to London in terms of visitor numbers. So it's quite popular. But as you can see, if it's a tourism-led destination, then tourism really contributes to the local economy. And that comes with it suppressed wages and so on. That said, a lot of people don't realise we've got two very highly skilled employers in the borough. One of them is GCHQ. There's an outpost of the Cheltenham operation on a hill above Scarborough. About 200 spooks in their office accommodation, listening to presumably what Putin's up to next. And now I've mentioned them, probably listening to me as well. Which is always a bit of a worry, but I don't have a Huawei phone, so I've got nothing to hide. And the other thing is we have Anglo-American, the massive mining conglomerate, currently building a new mine under the North Sea to extract polyhalite, which is a fertiliser. And they're going to send it all the way to Teesside on an underground 21-kilometre rubber conveyor belt. So the massive contrasts in our little borough. And then the other thing that sort of just sets the scene is that 85%. 85% of the most deprived households in the whole of North Yorkshire are in the borough of Scarborough. So it's a place of contrasts. That's just to kind of give you a bit of background. In terms of the story I want to talk to you about today, I'm going to take you back to 2019. And in the two decades or thereabouts before 2019, the political administration and the organisation itself had a pretty odd attitude towards engagement. It didn't bother. In fact, it hardly communicated. And it stripped the communications function down to one single officer. And when that one single officer had time off for 30 days a year, because that's what they were entitled to, there was no communications at all. Very, very bizarre. And famously, although I wasn't there at the time, a councillor used this analogy. He said, and I quote on good authority, "Well, it's not like the people of our borough have a choice about who provides their local services. They don't decide on the big shop at Morrison's versus Sainsbury's." And as a communicator, I think that's a really bizarre, if not sad, attitude towards your residents and your citizens. But then in 2019, it all changed, thank goodness. It was called an election, hurrah! And that single colour political party, doesn't matter that they were one particular party, lost out at the May elections. Massive shock to them because all of a sudden they weren't running the sweet shop. Now they were trying to raid it instead. And we had a Labour-led administration, okay, a minority administration. It did rely on some independents to help it together. The other thing that happened in 2019 is we welcomed a new chief executive, who was, for me, annoyingly young, annoyingly talented, much of a visionary, and as a communications person, understood the value of comms as a strategic function. So from my point of view, he ticked the box as the kind of person I'd like to work for. And as a consequence of him arriving and the political change and everything else, the council embarked on this massive, well, in Scarborough terms, massive piece of engagement about changing from the authority that didn't care what you thought, didn't listen, to one that actually was now asking for your views. So quite a significant moment in the history of the Borough Council generally. And although there was about 1,500 responses to this consultation, and I know for many organisations, because you're probably a lot bigger, some of yours than Scarborough, that's not a huge amount. But if you're starting from a base that's practically minus one, and actually that was a very good result, and the council was quite happy. And of course, a lot of that meant that it fed into the corporate plan and also helped us in terms of developing a communications strategy in what we were going to do in terms of trying to reinvigorate that, or rather restart, I suppose, the engagement piece. Any of you local government comms people or a local government in the room? So you'll get the fact that top one is loose, dog poo. Whether you're going to empty the bins or not and all that kind of stuff. With all these other massive industry, you know, kind of investment things we want to do, it's all down to whether there's a dog poo outside your house. But anyway, there you go. And you'll also appreciate this, part of the information that came back gave us a very good idea about where those things were. So that's the overall at the top of the screen. That's the breakdown of ward by ward. And what we wanted to do is identify whether actually there was any specific issues in wards that we could potentially could target. As it turned out, actually, most of them, as you can see, there's a general consistency across the place. And as communications people, we know that we are scientists as well as a bit of artistry in there. If you've got a really good insight, intelligence and data about what your audience wants and what your residents wants, then you can come up with a cracking comms plan that tackles some of those issues. So that's where we were with that. As a result of all this work, we realised that we probably needed to have what we called the direct conversation with our residents. And it was interesting how some of the channels weren't being used effectively whatsoever. I have to say, as a former journalist, I don't want to be disparaging of our colleagues in the media. They have a role to play. But let's be honest, one local newspaper that hardly anybody buys anymore and a couple of little radio stations, they weren't going to cut it for us. We really needed to have that direct conversation. The other bit that happened at the time was the chief executive brought in some people to help out with the comms. The LGA came and did a peer review and their conclusion was, "Your comms is rubbish." Then Wesco turned up and their conclusion was, "Your comms is rubbish." Fortunately, I think the chief executive realised already that actually needed to sort that out. So we went from a team of one to a team of six quite rapidly in the space of about six months, which was very helpful. And obviously, in terms of resource, when you look at what was there before and what was there then, politically, that was quite interesting to have that conversation with the politicians about why that was absolutely necessary. But it was helpful from our point of view. So one of the, and it was interesting what Ben said about developing those channels. So yes, we went on the social channels, as you'd imagine. No, we didn't manage to work out what to do on TikTok and certainly no political dancing on that, thank God. But one of the other things we did was we looked at Nextdoor, which actually found quite useful to us as a platform. But our biggest innovation, I suppose you might call, was the launch of our residents newsletter. Now, I use the cover, and I use this word cautiously, of the pandemic to start that conversation and use the newsletter and also argue for the resource. Now, in Scarborough, we had quite a few people in some of our little villages not listening to Boris and basically doing their own thing. And there was massive spikes in cases there. So we had to do some targeted comms. But we realised if we went out and used the excuse of the pandemic to launch this thing, it wasn't such a shock when we then moved away from talking about the pandemic to doing this. And the point of this channel was to talk about the narrative, which is all about investment, listening to what you're doing and that kind of stuff, and basically go out and talk about the story. So that's what it looked like. That story we ran in January about the changes to local government. And then that's Thor. Who knows about Thor? That bloody walrus ruined my New Year's Eve when he turned up unexpectedly and sat on the bloody slipway in the harbour. But I have to say, and I'm quite happy to admit to you today, that Thor did more as a PR machine than I could ever have achieved with a team of 100 or a budget of a million pounds. Because we had so much positive, lovely comments coming back on our social channels from all over the place, not just in the UK, about the fact that the council clearly listened because we didn't have the fireworks. So I have to say, I do a bit of credit to Thor in terms of how that worked. And for us, I think that actually launching this thing was transformational in terms of that story. And the numbers kind of stack up and sort of build up. It was really... So at the point where we were abolished as an authority, we had 40,000 subscribers. And in a borough of only 108,000, we were quite pleased with that. Some people, we moved across from our CRM service and just moved and did a lifting shift. But a vast amount of that was also organic growth, which we were very, very pleased with. The numbers also stack up in terms of going back and asking where we were. And you can see there, it seemed to be working because we were going in the right direction. If the government had decided to delay the change to the way the structure of local government worked in North Yorkshire by a whole year, we probably could have done a bit further. But I'm quite pleased in terms of the inform rating. Now, I know the LGA would argue that needs to be in the mid-60s to be a tick. But the fact we moved eight percentage points in a couple of years, I mean, I'm taking that as a bit of a little victory for me. The satisfaction went up a little bit. Now, we asked a different set of questions in 2020 that we did in 2022. And on the trust stuff, very interesting what Ben said earlier on. Our trust rating was not as good as it could have been. I've not put it up there because it's almost embarrassingly low. But I think that's probably to do with a lot of the political shenanigans. That's the politest way of putting it in Scarborough. And I know this is being recorded and I will stand by these next comments. The politics in Scarborough moved from either being challenging at that end of the scale to poisonous at that end of the scale, depending on what was going on and what the major issues were. And I think that had a lot about the fact our trust rating was not as high as it could be. It was in the mid-40s or something. So it wasn't as good as it could be. But as part of the 2022 stuff, which I thought was interesting and based on the fact we always go for insiders, communicators, we did ask questions about media consumption, which is the first time we'd ever done that because we were quite interested in where people were getting our news from. So we're quite pleased that 54% of people cited residents news as where they were getting their information from. And I should say, by the way, our opening rates were on average in the mid-50s. And we used GovDelivery, Granicus, and they said, they told us the feedback was, "Actually, that's quite good. An opening rate in the mid-50s is pretty all right." And as you can see, some of our other own channels appear to do reasonably well. The local media still has a role to play. But I think at the moment, if you took it as a kind of top 10, we're doing slightly better. And that whalish about email, it was interesting about that nearly three-quarters of their people, sorry, two-thirds of people said, "Actually, it was their preferred channel." It's really odd in 2023, with all the channels you've got available too, that actually email seems to be preferred. Now, my caveat is, I haven't done, because having left the organisation now because it doesn't exist, I don't have loads of detail on the demographics. And I think that would be quite insightful if that was available, but sadly it's not. So it's very broad brush, but hopefully you get a bit of a gist. And I've pulled together some learning points about our experience in terms of the newsletter anyway. Getting a tone of voice is right, so important. And I was having a conversation with someone before we started about councils that still refer to themselves as Scarborough Borough Council is inviting members of the public and all this kind of stuff. It's really boring. If you write in the third person, that's your first mistake because we don't talk about that in real life. We don't talk to our friends like that in the pub in the evening or in networking drink sessions. So why would we do it when we move into our organisation and we represent it? So "we, you and us" was the way forward for us. And that was our sort of starting point and it seemed to make a difference. The feedback loop. Obviously, because this is a newsletter, we didn't have that direct feedback as you get through your social channels, but we did have a mechanism. So it said, "If you quite like what you've read in this newsletter and you think it's useful, forward it to your friends and encourage them to subscribe. If you think it's a load of old baloney, here's an email address and you can tell us." They did. The people of Whitby moaned about the stories about Scarborough. The people of Farring moaned about the stories about Whitby. And the people of Scarborough were just pissed off generally. And the number of emails I had from people saying, "You've misspelt this word in a 10,000-word newsletter" and took absolute pleasure in pointing out that we've got that wrong. I do remember, dare I admit this, to writing back to some person saying, "I agree with you, it's a travesty of the English language, I fired them." I never heard from that person ever again. The consistence of message, I think, is really important. That's about, in fact, what Ben was talking about, expanding your channels, the kind of content that's complementary, so there has some, you know, the golden thread, you know, the buzzwords and all that kind of stuff. Now, interestingly, the second one up from the bottom, it was interesting that pictures, as Nick was saying earlier on about pictures still creating interest. I mean, that picture of Thor seemed to go down really well when we put that in the residents news. The other thing, now, I know if you're in local government, it's easy for me to say, having finally finished working for the organisation, "Don't put councillors in your newsletter, it turns people off." Because I feel, this is my personal opinion rather than, I've got no evidence to back this up, that if councillors are all in it, cutting ribbons outside recycling bins, it's just seen as a propaganda vehicle for them. And the other thing I'd say, and I mentioned this to Darren earlier on, is just get on with it, you know, be brave, okay? We're in the public sector. Provided you don't put on social media that you think the leaders of the councils are right knob, then you should be all right, surely, really. So from our point of view, we thought the newsletter was really quite useful. But then we wanted to move on. And these are my kind of pictures as an analogy. This is not the main coastal road into Scarborough, by the way. Just in case you're, sorry, Phil, so you know, when you're driving your caravan down the road. But just in terms of where we were at the beginning, there was just tumbleweed because of the attitude of the administration previously. We moved things on a little bit. And again, this is a mock-up picture of someone sitting on Scarborough beach reading our residents newsletter, you know, but kind of what have you. But then we thought, well, where can we go with this next? What could we do? And this plays into what Ben was saying earlier on about expanding those channels. Well, we chose to go down the route of running a podcast. Again, because we thought, well, what have we got to lose? This is the picture of us on the training, which is always quite amusing because it's a screen grab of people looking really bored. This guy here, though, was a bit of our hero. Anyone recognise his face? Well, I know you know him, but you're not allowed because you're, you know... So this is Adrian Stirrup, who's a bit of a podcast guru and ran a podcast with Darren for a long time. He works for one of the London boroughs and knows about this stuff. So we brought him on our training and he taught us an awful lot in an hour and a half. But crucially for me, the geezer in the middle with a beard is not a member of the comms team. Anyone want to guess who he might be? He's the leader of the council, who was so keen to explore the opportunities of podcasts, he invited himself on the training and came on. And actually, it was great, really, really good. And he was meant in many ways for me, he was our flag bearer. So it was quite nice to have his support. And when it came to investing in some resources to make all this work, he was like, "Yep, let's do it." So we launched two. Boroughcast was effectively the sister to the residents newsletter. It brought that alive in audio with interviews with people. Lots of, it was very useful for advocacy because we could get other people to tell the story on our behalf. So we'd go and interview Darren, who ran the fish and chip shop. He said, "Oh yeah, the council's helped me with this bounce-back loan and all this jazz." And it worked really well. We also had a thing called the Sounds of the Borough. People would send in lots of noises of waves. I don't have no idea why that would be. But we put those on air, you know, in the podcast because it just made it sound more interesting. And then the other one, in conversation with, was the one that we featured, the leader of the council. And he was able to express his opinion politically. We didn't allow him just to come on and slag off the opposition because that'd be very wrong. Because obviously, we were paid officers of the council, so that tricky line to balance there. But he was able to bring, we could go into more detail. People would submit questions and stuff like that to him. So for us, it was almost like having a BBC local radio phone-in, but in a podcast. And it worked quite well. And we've done almost about a year of them. Now, the insight and intelligence you get back from when you put stuff like this online is fascinating. And I'll tell you a bit more in a minute. This next slide shows you what Apple Podcasts in particular thinks you must be interested in if you are on listening to Scarborough Borough Council. So check this out. Disasters, history, an ongoing soap opera, dictators and aeroplanes falling out of the sky. I shall leave that one with you in terms of how that worked. But actually, it was really interesting listening to some of that stuff. Oh, hold on. Let me just go back, because I'll introduce Steve in just a second. And some of the stuff that came out from an insight point of view was actually really interesting, which I can, I'll tell you about on the final slide. But anyway, I messaged Steve and said, "Would you do a little video for me that I can play?" Rather than me trying to repeat his words. So in one minute fifteen, if you don't mind, a bit of politics, just for a minute or so.
From a political perspective, I had two goals for the podcast. Firstly, reaching new audiences through less traditional mediums in ways that had the potential to be more convenient for the listener. But also to show that people in politics were just ordinary people who were trying to do their best for the communities they serve. When we started this journey in podcasting, I have to admit I was nervous. I was used to standing up in front of a full council meeting and expressing my views. But this felt different. The way we did it, almost a fireside chat with friends, made it easy to get my points across in a way that didn't sound condescending. It was all done without any rehearsal or pre-knowledge of questions or topics that we discussed. As it turned out, I needn't have worried. I was overwhelmed by the number of listeners we achieved in a few months. The opportunity we gave listeners to ask me questions was really well received. And I was surprised at the interest people took in local and national issues. I think one of the best things about the podcasts is the opportunity to engage with a wide range of people of all ages and views. We're told that engaging young people in politics is hard to achieve. If our podcasts do nothing else, I hope they do that.
So that's the leader of the council, a kind of a big tick because he quite liked it. So that's always helpful if you can do something that the leader of the council likes. We started by embedding the content on our website and we used SoundCloud. But we quickly realised that in order to get it into the places where people are, you've got to be on those main podcasting platforms. So we got some syndication organised and we were now, well, you can still hear them, they're on there, on Apple, Spotify and Amazon. It made such a difference. And in fact, the insights and intelligence you get back from that is absolutely fascinating. So that's Steve. But yeah, so I'm really pleased he was able to do that. As you can see, then, in terms of where we were going, he was happy with what was going on. He's right, we never told him what we were going to talk about until we got to the morning because he then couldn't say, "Oh, I don't want to talk about that." He had no choice because we just switched the microphones on and said, "Right, let's go." And we, off we went. So we didn't quite achieve a year. Again, I think if we extended the way that the local government reorganisation, if that was another year, we could have gone a bit further. But 2,000 downloads, streams, listeners, we were quite pleased with that and that was useful. Getting content on Alexa was really good. I was going to try and risk doing a live demo today. But all I do is go, if anyone got an Alexa at home, so go home tonight when you're bored, really bored, and say, "Alexa, play me a podcast from Scarborough Borough Council." And she should play you the latest podcast. We had some plans in terms of expanding channels to then do mini-news bulletins, maybe a weekly news update on Alexa that you could say, "What's the latest news from Scarborough Borough Council?", a bit like the way the BBC do. But anyway, the government decided we wouldn't exist. Interestingly, we did two special editions for the Armed Forces Day. Last year, Scarborough welcomed about 100,000 people to the borough for the Armed Forces Day national event. We did two of those. They by far were the most popular. Whereas the one about the Queen, after the Queen died, we did some research and found all those people that knew, had met her when she was there, all the royal connections, it bombed. 20 listens, what a waste of time that was. But you know, it's good to get this feedback. One of our colleagues listened to every single thing we uploaded. Very sweet of him, but we discounted, and he wasn't in the comms team, by the way, and it wasn't me pressing F5 to refresh it. He genuinely listened to all of them, but obviously we discounted his figure. So that's about 17 fewer than we should have. It is more complicated, by the way, to do it. I thought, I mean, Adrian was inspirational with his training. He sort of suggested, "You just get a microphone and open the, press the record button and start talking." Like, "Go." But actually, it's more complicated than that. But I think it's worth the effort. The one thing we didn't do well at all was promoting where that content was. We probably didn't use our existing other channels to the greatest effect in terms of pointing people to that content. And there are ways you can do that. It's almost like a template for how you promote podcasts in particular, which we didn't get around to. And the other thing I'd just say at the end there really is kind of give it a go. What have you got to lose? If it's that bad, all you need to do is delete it, never publish it and no one will ever notice. Then you should be okay. So I hope that's useful. It's either going to put you off from going down the route that we did at Scarborough or you might go, "Actually, that's quite useful." And if it is, then good luck. But there's my details. If I can provide any more insight and stuff like that afterwards, very happy. Just reach out and get in touch. So thank you very much.
That's fantastic, Andy, thank you. Yeah, good fun and lots of insights there. I'm sure people have got questions. I'm with you, I think the podcast medium is brilliant. I've done lots of sessions with Adrian and it's brilliant to then see people go off and create podcasts. And I'm convinced it's a really powerful, it's quite a unique medium, isn't it? It's different to others and I think it's got lots of value as an internal comms tool as well, actually, organisations with large numbers of staff. So you did all that great work. Do you know what's happened now since the new structure's come into being? And is the podcast carrying on or will it die a death?
It has died sadly, yeah. Which I think is a real shame because we kind of, we were just getting into our stride and then all of a sudden the carpet was pulled.
Yeah, what a shame. Questions for Andy?
Yeah, I was just wondering, to what extent do you think the success of communications such as this, say, social media, e-bulletins, podcasts relies on senior leadership thereby?
I think it does because you want them to endorse what you're doing. But certainly with the podcast, we just got on with it. I mean, we had, our flag bearer was the leader of the council. I suppose in an organisation like a local council, you can't go much higher because after all, he or she bosses about the chief executive and if the leader of the council wants it done. So I have to say, all credit to Steve because he was very interested in doing that. But I have to say, most organisations, well, some are risk averse. I really do think, just get on with it and see what happens. What's the worst that's going to happen? Somebody says, "Don't like it, please don't do it again." And you just don't, otherwise most people won't even notice. And if we're trusted as communications professionals in our area to go out and explore these new opportunities, take, be brave in what we're doing in terms of developing those new channels, why not? I mean, I really would say to you, get on with it. It's great fun. I mean, you know, I spent 20 years being a broadcast journalist. So it's great to be behind a microphone again. I felt right at home. You know, it was almost like now I want to go back into being a journalist, but you know, there's no money in it sadly. But so I think it's actually, it's good. I would just encourage you to say, yeah. And most, I mean, I have to say, when we talked about it at the top table, reflecting on your article, this great article in MJ, when we got to the top, they said, "This is what we're going to do." I had a load of blank faces at me. But nobody said no, so that's why we just decided it was worth pursuing.
Thank you. It was really interesting, all of it, especially kind of the piece on podcasting. But I picked up on a couple of other platforms that you mentioned. And I just wondered kind of to what extent, working with Granicus, and then also, I think you mentioned Nextdoor had on kind of the success of revolutionising how you did comms at the council? Because their channels were looking at potentially to explore.
Well, I'm not, like they say on YouTube, and let me just say, I'm not sponsored by this. Granicus, I think, actually were very, very helpful because certainly the way the Granicus is set up, that you benefit from their network. And when you look at the analytics of where people are coming from, your subscriber base, we had loads coming to us from HMRC and quite a few from the DVLA, where you go to, you know, change your driving licence, whatever, saying, "Oh, it looks like you live in the Scarborough Borough, do you want to do this?" Yes, and people would come to it. So I think from our point of view, it was great for the organic growth. So yes, I would say they're worth looking at. Now, I have to say, of course, there are other Granicus types around and about and you'd need to go and look at them on their own merit and make that decision. Nextdoor, interesting, that opened the door, excuse the pun, to about another 12,000 people. What we liked about Nextdoor, at the moment, it's very much in broadcast mode. And I do think it's a bit, you either like it or you don't, or you find it useful or it isn't. But for us, it was a bit of a, well, we're starting from that tumbleweed blowing around. We're not doing anything, why not? And we looked at it and it was, we found it reasonably useful. The best bit, I think, for us is that the people who are on there, they're real people. Well, at least they, you know, you'd be told to believe. And to their credit, Nextdoor are actually very helpful, falling over themselves really to be helpful in terms of your journey adopting that new platform. So from us, it worked. It might not obviously work for all organisations.
Just to piggyback on a couple of things that you said there. One, Jess at the back runs out relationships with Granicus. So if you want to know, take it for granted, whoever you need to introduce to there. And I would back that up. I think email, and email comms widely said is the most important thing. They're very good at having very, very high quality deliver rates because of their network. Whatever the systems around. On Nextdoor, we will very shortly be doing a press and PR round about our relationship with Nextdoor. So we've been talking to Nextdoor for about six months now. And they're a bit of a strange company sometimes. I don't think they really know how they're going to monetise Nextdoor here. And all of these platforms have to monetise this somewhere. So with Facebook, it's ads, with Twitter, it's companies like ours paying a huge amount of money. They're just like that. But Nextdoor, I don't think we'll crack that one. They don't really know what we're going to do. But they're literally, we're, you know, literally waiting to sign an agreement at the moment.
That's funny, you're speaking about something similar.
And then we will be able to PR into Nextdoor. Because all of our customers want it. All of our customers want it. It'll be simple, start with, like all the AKRs or the UKAs, you know, it's all.
And with the podcast, it's as well as sort of the role from the same place. Get no value for money from Sunderland City Council. In terms of podcasts, we've like talked about that and I think that's something that we're going to explore. So just interested, no, how often did you do it? Because I think these things are only good if they're consistent and frequent. And was it more than the leader? Did you get sort of residents and parts of the community to come and talk? And, you know, was it wider than that? Or even like a day in the life of, so working with environmental services and things like that? Was it wider than the leader and the chief exec and the-
Yeah, we never had a chief executive on it at all, actually. So in terms of the first part of your question, it was monthly. Both went out monthly.